The update of the City of Pearland Code of Values. I'll ask our city manager to share that with us.
Thanks, Ken, Mayor. We've had a staff team that's worked very hard. We've, you know, very serious and over the last several years, we've been very intentional about building up our capacity for organizational improvements. We want a team of city staff members that are smart, that have the right tools, that are trained. And we've also spent a lot of time talking about this high-performance organization as a philosophy of how we approach the work. It's not a bumper sticker. It's more of a theory about how we work together. And we've had a team that's taken that to a next level. I noticed the Pearland ISD just finished their strategic plan. This is sort of a somewhat akin where we had a discussion over the summer months and talked about the values of our organization and what we think's most important. And so I'm not going to take anything away from what the team's going to present. Ms. Denise here is the first one to talk on behalf of that, and then maybe I'll have a couple of comments, but I'll turn it over to them first.
Thank you, Clay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Denise Parker. I have been with the City of-
Pull this down. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
I hear you now.
I have been with the City of Pearland for just a little more than four years. I serve as one of three HR business partners. I'm excited to be here tonight to present to you all, but first I want to acknowledge our esteemed mayor, Mayor Tom Reed, and to all of the council members and to our city In addition, I want to introduce to you two of my colleagues, Yvette Conave and Julian Kelly, whom you will hear from in just a few moments. But tonight, we want to share with you just a little bit about how we are transforming government, the government experience by improving what we do on the inside. Yvette, Julian, and I represent the diversity of faces and talent that have come together to give input, to review, and to revise our core values. We are committed to a purpose greater than ourselves. What we do makes a positive difference and leaves a proud legacy. We serve together through these values. This is our credo or preamble, if you will. We believe that in a purpose that exceeds our individual statuses, positions, and our titles, but woven together, we lay the framework for continuous improvement and culture that operates in an inclusive environment, leading to a high-performing and high-functioning So what are core values? Core values simply are principles that guides the organization's internal conduct as well as its relationship with the external world. So what we did in 1995, our initial core values were established, that we would be responsive, results-oriented, we would be trust builders, and we would be accountable. These values were developed organically by a group of employees who saw the need to elevate the city as an organization. In addition, using these principles to attract and to retain talent that personified these qualities and values to better serve our community. And so here we are, almost 25 years later, taking that same organic approach. So where are we now? In 1995, the city had approximately 300 employees. Today, we have more than doubled in size to more than 790 employees. We have approximately 18 employees who still remain employed with us when those initial core values were established almost a quarter of a century ago, with 10 years ranging from 25 to 30-plus years. So as you can see, the city has evolved, and we know that with evolution, transformation comes forth. So to take the next step in that evolution, we decided to go back to where we began, and we started with our employees. So beginning back in March, on March 25th, actually, we started to host what we called Core Value Talks. Myself, Clay, Trent, or John would go out, went out to every facility, and we offered up the opportunity just to sit down and chat with us. We wanted to find out what people valued. What legacy did you want to leave behind? What did you want your city to be known for? And what were you most proud of about working here at the City of Pearland? We had 29 meetings. We met with 334 employees, and it took four months to sit down and have all these conversations. We were up at 5:30, 6:00 in the morning at some locations, and we were out at 6:00, 6:30 at others. We wanted to make sure that every employee who wanted to sit down and share their opinions and thoughts had that opportunity. All of that led to over 1,300 comments, over 1,300 opinions and thoughts. So I took all of that data and made a very nice technical spreadsheet of information and realized it didn't quite tell the story that I was hoping to tell. So I then took all of that data and information, and I put it on post-it notes. Every comment that was shared, every opinion, every word, every thought, went on a post-it note. So in an effort to save trees, a lot of those comments went on one post-it note. I put all of those in front of our executive leadership team, and I asked them to help me surmise what employees were telling us. So they took several hours, six, to discuss and debate and to make sure that they were representing employees well and that they were coming across with the thoughts that employees wanted them to. Obviously, lots of words rose to the top. That was the most probably exciting thing about having these conversations, that employees, regardless of how long they'd been here or what department they were in, shared many of the same comments that they wanted to be known for, that they wanted their core values to be, that they wanted the legacy that we were leaving behind as a city to be. Those ultimately became these. Trust. We build trust by providing excellent service, honoring it through accountability and effective communication. We act with kindness and empathy, embracing diversity and inclusion. Integrity. We are honest, ethical, and do right things for the right reasons. Teamwork. We are a caring workplace made up of a team of working towards a shared purpose. We collaborate and support each other. Ownership. This is our city. We are invested and dedicated to its continuous success. We take pride in all we do. Innovation. We are progressive thinkers who embrace the challenge of continuous improvement. When we went out and met with employees, we committed to them that once we had core values, we would send them back out to them, just to make sure that what I heard and what I got down was what they said. So we sent all these back out and asked for one more final stamp of approval from our employees. 95% of the respondents said this was it, that we got it right. This is what they wanted to be known for.
So after 25 years, you may ask, why do core values matter? Core values matter because they are things that we believe are the most important way that we live and work. They speak to what makes the City of Pearland different from any other city. It's been said that in hiring processes, most companies and organizations will spend more time looking for a 90% talent over 10% character. Here, we understand that if our core values are what we want them to be, it will not be hard to make the right decision for the right reason. It's also said that core values are not just mere words determine your priorities in your organization, but core values are what support the vision of your organization. It helps shapes its culture. They are the essence of organizations' identity, their principles, beliefs, and philosophies. So what's next? What's next is we're going to walk into a leadership philosophy. It describes the beliefs of our organization and what it does. We walk into our vision, what are we trying to accomplish, what are we desiring for the future, and how do we provide the direction of our organization? And lastly, the next thing we're going to do is our mission. And our mission is a statement that describes the purpose of the organization and why we do it. Thank you.
So Mayor and Council, we wanted to check in and share where we were in this work. As you can see, it's an organic thing that's really employee-centric and employee-driven. You know, I guess we could have just copied and pasted what was done 25 years ago. These aren't dramatically different, but this is, these are the employees' words for where we're at right now. And as Julian said, we've got some work to do next on building this into mission statements and values. We also want to get practical with applying our current work rules against these values to make sure they all align. So this is a long process. It's never finished. It's continual improvement, but we're at a significant spot with the work on these values. Want to thank the team here that did so much, and I'm glad there's so many folks from our staff team that are here. They've all, you know, been a part of this and sat in on meetings and, you know, really engaged in all this. I think it's one of the things that makes us a great workplace as we've recently recognized and an organization that can deliver the results that the council sets out for us to achieve with your policies. So thanks for your attention. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to try to address those or go from here, but up to you.
I was impressed with the presentation. I think it does, it gives us some guidance as not only the city council members and staff members of the community city, but also I think it lets the general public know that we're very careful how we run our operation, how we work with each other, and how our core values are very important to us. I was impressed with the number of interviews you had with the Bay of derivatives at the level. And Clay, I appreciate you having this as part of our agenda to share this with us, and I think it's something, I think it's quite impressive.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. That's all we had, sir, unless there was anything else. So, thanks.
Thank you, guys. You've done good. Let me open a rugged meeting in City Council of City of Pearland for September the 16th, I can't believe, for 2019. As we always do, besides welcome you to our meetings, is to, we're amongst the few, the cities across the nation that believe in a invocation before we begin our work for the city and our citizens, and also pledge our allegiance to the American and Texas flag. And this, I think, sets the parameters for which we operate as a city council. And to start this off, I'd like to ask Councilmember Alondo, would he do the invocation tonight?
If you'd please rise and join me in prayer.
And Councilman Carbone, would you us a pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, thank you for the abundant blessings that you've bestowed upon the City of Pearland and its people. Thank you for our strong community, our shared prosperity, and the leaders that we have gathered here tonight. Thank you for the employees of the city who keep Pearland running, the first responders who keep us safe. And as we continue our meeting tonight, please fill us with the strength and wisdom to make decisions in accordance with your will. And we pray that as we're all sent off tonight, we have a safe, happy, and blessed holiday season. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, have pledged allegiance to the D. Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
If you have a copy of our agenda, I will be following the agenda and share with you the progress we're making. Moving in our agenda to item number three, which is roll call. All of our council members are here, are currently present with their bright and shiny faces. And I believe that we have all of our staff members that are, we're having input into the council agenda items tonight. So with that information on the record, let's move to item number four, which should be citizen comments. I just can't remember a little. Mayor Pro, tell them.
Mayor, we have no citizen comments tonight.
Moving to item number five. On the agenda, it says, public hearing, done. Well, there really is one. That was just to pick everybody out. Actually, it is a public hearing, and I'll ask the staff to do the review on this item
Mayor, there's no public hearing today.
Okay. Moving to item, item number of citizen comments. Councilmember Little, we just have none of those as well. Moving down into council and staff discussion. Councilmember Alondo, if you have any questions regarding our agenda, which is-
Consideration and possible action of consent agenda items B through B and C. So moved.
Second. I wanted to pull item C.
All right. Consideration and possible action of consent agenda item B. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. We do have motion, second, and Madam Secretary, I believe we got a motion, second, on the floor.
Councilmember Alondo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay. Moving in our agenda down to item seven, which is the consent agenda. I'll ask Councilmember Alondo, he does such a good job on it.
Consideration and possible action, second and final reading of ordinance 2000M-194. So moved.
Have a motion, second, on the floor. F report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a rezone, as was stated. It's a second reading. The applicant, Ms. Polak, is on behalf of Signature Companies. They're requesting to go from the GB to a general commercial district. This is at Manville and Fight Road. This has been through the public hearings and recommendations, your planning and zoning, as well as at council at the first reading. So positive recommendations, and here for your final consideration tonight.
Council, have any question or comments regarding this staff report? Owens?
Yeah, Mayor, I asked to have that pulled, and I know that this is just for the zoning on there, and we'll vote on it, on what they're looking at doing later on. But for the zoning, I just want to make known that, which I talked about last time, that I will vote no on this one.
Do you have a comment for council on this item? There are none. Madam Secretary, I believe we got a motion, second, on the floor there.
Councilmember Alondo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Motion passes six to zero, six to one.
Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2019-310. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, on the floor, I believe. Y'all know it. And F report.
Thanks, sir. So a couple of years ago, we moved our dispatch for emergency medical services over to Cypress Creek. We've been very pleased with the service they provided. They send their people over as part of their orientation and vice versa. We have people go to their dispatch center. It's a very seamless operation and provides a very high level of service. And so, and recommend your renewal as part of this consideration. That's it.
Council, have any question or comment regarding the staff report?
Yes, Mayor. I got a couple of questions with respect to language in the contract. One, so in the renewal, as it comes up at the, for the, it comes up at the end of the three years for the renewal, the terms state that we have to give them, I believe, 90 days notice in order to be able to terminate, or the renewal's automatic. So have we, I'm presuming that we have already communicated that to them since, since we're within that 90 days? Or how are we dealing with that portion of the contract that basically states that we're already in contract with them?
Councilmember Perez? We, we just, we did, we chose the one-year renewal. So there are two one-year renewals after the third, after the first three years. So we're renewing for one more year.
Okay, I guess my, my question would be, and I don't have any problem with continuing on with them, but do we need to make this decision for the next one-year renewals, 90 days ahead of the December deadline?
Yes.
To avoid any kind of penalties in the contract? I mean, should we be looking at this maybe in September of next year?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll be looking to go out for bid again if we choose to do that.
Okay. The, the other question, in their, in their contract, they, they note that they have the, the sole and exclusive judgment to reduce the base fees by 25%, I guess essentially based on how they, how they review us as a first responder. Have they, have we received that discount in the first two years?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
We kind of maybe find out as to why? It looks like we're going an uptick, but it, the language seems a little heavy-handed, like they just get to review us and decide whether they're going to give us a discount or not, non-cooperatively. I'm not sure what it is that we would have done wrong to not qualify for that discount. But I don't want to, I don't want to interfere with our, moving forward with this contract, but I'd like to see if there is an opportunity for us to get that discount that may affect, you know, how I judge the, the next renewal and then subsequent to that. I'm confident we'd like to move forward with them. They've done a good job performance-wise, but, you know, I don't want to pay a premium if we're not doing anything.
We'll look into that, just as the city manager mentioned. We're really happy with them.
All right. Thank you.
Any other question or comment from staff? Would you present that then? I believe we have a motion, second, on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Alondo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda, matters removed from the consent agenda. There were none. And we've all taken care of all the love behind us. Moving to new business, Councilmember Carbone, would you present item one?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, second reading of ordinance number 1584-1. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we saw just a week ago, this is our normal first-of-the-year budget amendment dealing primarily with carryovers. We have added and recognized some FEMA reimbursement from Hurricane Harvey that's on the cusp of starting to be delivered. There weren't any objections last time, but there was at least one question. So Mr. McCarter's going to walk us through there just for your mind and bring us up speed to bring this home.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sean McCarter, Assistant Finance Director with the City of Pearland, here tonight to walk through the second reading of our first budget amendment, also known as the fiscal year 19 carryovers. Tonight's agenda, we'll go through what a carryover is and define what we're talking about here tonight. I will quickly review the un-audited year-end standing in the general fund and water and sewer fund. I will state that we have not closed out the fiscal year yet, so these are not final numbers, but they do give us an idea of the resources we have for these carryovers. Next, we'll talk about the FY 19 carryovers and adjustments for general fund and water and sewer fund specifically. Then we'll cover all other funds together. We'll also cover two follow-up items from the prior meeting to make sure we have clarification and direction there. First and foremost, we need to find what a carryover is. This process is the process of moving expenditures and revenues from one fiscal year to the next. This is a standard practice in local government. Essentially, this is everything that we weren't able to complete within the confines of fiscal year 2019. What a carryover specifically is, a lot of these are goods and services ordered in '19 but not received before September 30th, 2019. So they're authorized expenditures that just haven't been completed yet. They might be special projects or purchases that were budgeted and scheduled to occur but were delayed. And lastly, they might be mid-year allocation items. Those allocations were made in July this year, and many of those are still open, yet to be closed out. Carryover is not small-dollar items. Any request under $1,000 was denied. Those are to be covered within the fiscal year '20 budget. These are not meant to be compensation for reductions during the FY '20 budget process. They're not meant to be operational or supply recurring expenses either. So these are large-dollar items that are more or less one-off expenditures, not meant to compensate for anything that was cut out of the budget last year. Looking at our preliminary FY '19 income statement, again, state that the year's not closed yet, so these numbers will shift once we get that done. Generally speaking, in revenue, we finished about $600,000 over our projection. Of course, in the way was slight overage in property tax receipts, right around, I think, just under budget on sales tax, and permitting fees finished about $300,000 over budget as well. On the expenditure side, the lion's share of that $3.2 million is going to be salaries. That makes up about $1.4 million of that expense, also makes up most of the expense within our general fund, $906,000 that is going to be carried over into the next year as well. We also have some adjustments here. These are items specifically tied to funding we expect to receive from FEMA for our category B expenditures. These are reimbursements for costs incurred during the storm and immediately thereafter. We did cover this in broad strokes in Mr. Pearson's transmittal letter in the FY '20 budget. We use that as the basis for what's included here. The asset management program and the comprehensive plan match what was laid out in that document. The $420,000 for vehicles allows us to replace six Crown Victorias with Ford Explorers, fully equipped. Those are $70,000 apiece. We also have $100,000 for streets and sidewalks respectively, and a contribution to fund balance of $280,000. Looking at our preliminary income statement for FY '20, we are looking to carry over $906,000 for FY '19 expenditures into FY '20. You can find a full list of those line items on page 14 of your agenda packet. And then we add in our FEMA reimbursement, that $1.6 million in anticipated funds to be received roughly of February of 2020. The expenditures of 1.3 with the contribution of roughly $300,000. That brings us to a total ending fund balance projected of $17.6 million. That does bring us about $3 million over our over-policy amount. We will be back at mid-year to do a mid-year allocation if deemed appropriate. We'll have a discussion item for our February early budget input session to lay out some options there and gauge council interest in which items should be funded. Next, we'll move on to the enterprise fund and other funds as well. Looking at our preliminary income statement here, I will state that there is roughly $27 million in refunding of debt included in both revenues and expenditures. So you see that revenue piece at $30 million is more like 2.7 million. That expenditure variance of $21 million is a little bit, is more like 7 million, 6.5 million there. On the revenue side, it's mainly sale of water and sewer that are driving that positive variance. On the expenditure side, we do see some professional services and sales or savings from our refunding, roughly $500,000, driving much of that variance. After our carryovers, we do see about $3.3 million in variance on the expense side there, again, before the year closed out. So we do expect that expenditure number to increase as we finish out those accruals. Looking at our carryovers here, again, on page 14, you can see the detail, but roughly $3.2 million in expenditures being carried over to FY '20. We have more than enough resources to cover that, looking at the amount over our debt policy of roughly $32 million going forward. Looking at all of our other funds taken here, we do have $500,000 in the CBB fund for the train depot. That's half of that special revenue fund there. Our motor pool fund is exclusively for vehicles. Those are out ordered, just not received yet. New this year, we do have the infrastructure redevelopment fund. This $491,000 represents the balance of the budget for streets and sidewalks that'll be moved into this new capital fund, along with the total FY20 budget and the additional $200,000 from FEMA. And then lastly, the PEDC fund, that $1.5 million was approved by their board in October as an amendment to their budget. Prior meeting follow-ups, there was a lot of discussion last time around the funding for the Train Depot. We did go ahead and attach the initial memo that was shared out via a Thursday packet just before Thanksgiving to this AR. There's also an additional memo attached that provides a little bit more background, specifically to the conversation that was had. With the approval of the $500,000 for that hotel occupancy fund, the phase one of that restoration would be coordinated by our capital projects group after today's meeting. They would get going on that if it remains included in this budget. Again, a lot of discussion around the water and sewer, sale of water versus the expense. The crux of the question being, how could we finish over budget on the revenues and under budget on the expense if they're directly related? Kind of the core of that was that we were talking about relative to budget, not relative to the prior year actual. Here, we did do a reconciliation of our preliminary actual that was included in the numbers last, last week. We backed, or we added in the invoices that are going to be moved, so there's roughly $550,000 in those invoices that were not in that preliminary number. And then we have a carryover, which is not typical for this specific account. This was a true-up with the City of Houston and the GCWA for capital expenses. And if you take that total, that 7.2 million, that actually has us finishing over budget on the expense side for purchase of water, similar to the way that revenues finished over. We do have a small write-up in there that this relationship isn't necessarily one-to-one. We don't want to paint it that way, but they are definitely related. Looking at the actual relative to last year, which I think is probably the more valuable of the comparisons, we do see our purchase of water account there excluding that lump-sum true-up, so this is just the operational purchase of water, finishing under last year's amount by 673,000. On the water sales, that is sales to our customers, we're finishing $440,000 under. So again, not a one-to-one relationship, but we do see both of those finishing under last year, as would be expected with a 0% rate increase and less purchase of water, less consumption from our residents as well. Our next steps, really, this is the last step for you, City Council. We'll have these updated in our system in the morning, so we'll open that up and hand it back to Mr. Pearson if there's any questions we can take care of.
Nothing to answer, but did recognize that the questions and outlined our follow-ups to those, so we're ready to go from there. So, back to you.
Councilmember, any question or comment? Hold on, we have one citizen that would like to speak on this topic, but Donald Hayes, please come up, give your name and address, let me your comments to three minutes, please.
Donald Hayes, 4606 Russet Place, South Pearland. Good evening, Mayor Reed and council members. I come before you tonight in my capacity, both as an officer of the Pearland Historical Society and also as the acting chairman for the Citizens Advisory Committee to restore the depot. I come to you tonight to ask for your support of the restoration of Pearland's historic train depot. As you're aware, the Convention and Visitors Bureau Advisory Board voted unanimously during their November 13th meeting to deploy the $500,000 earmarked from hotel occupancy tax funds, allowing the project to take a critical step forward rather than be in stasis until the full project balance of $400,000 could be raised. It's essential that council understand the strategy that has caused this strategic shift as we recognize that this is a change from how the project was originally presented to council in 2018. At that time, the project was presented in three phases. Now, however, we are proposing to narrow the scope of the project to phase one, the restoration of the original depot building, some accompanying ADA compliant restrooms, an office, and a shade structure. In the estimate received and presented to council in September 2018, the cost of phase one is estimated at $400,000. The Citizens Advisory Committee has raised to date more than $22,000 through a combination of grants, private donations, and the sale of bricks. We do not intend to halt those efforts as we hope to gain momentum. In fact, we have a number of additional donations pending that we hope to disclose by Q1 of calendar 2020 from organizations that have reached out to our committee directly. The need to act now is not only in recognition of the declining state of the depot. Activity will be the spark to excite increased fundraising momentum as we work to see the project to its completion. It will also likely act as a tipping point for the development of arts and culture in the City of Pearland, an objective that is squarely in alignment with Pearland's 2020 strategic plan. In closing, the desire to move forward is shared by City of Pearland Administration, the CVB Advisory Board, the Pearland Historical Society, and the Citizens Advisory Committee. It's our mutual hope that this council will act decisively to preserve and protect our city's oldest existing structure, the birthplace of Pearland, and help restore it to its rightful place as Pearland's cultural centerpiece. I would like to thank Councilmember Owens, in particular, for the vocal support that he has lent to this project leading up to today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're in discussion with John with, on the budget. Were you in the process of talking about the budget?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple of questions on the budget process.
Okay.
And I appreciate.
Council, I have another question.
You had a part on, on fundraising and stuff, and I think you're exactly right. The last thing that we heard, that within two years, if we don't do something, it'll be, that's the sawdust out there that's left. And so I think, you know, using the hot tax money is the thing to do on that. The other part is, going back on the budget side, looking at, the way this thing is listed on the 1.6 million, on there, it's reoccurring, it's an expense because of Harvey. And as I see on some of this, I don't think that was what it was really. I don't think you can, that's a stretch. In order to say those expenses were on there, 1.6 million was because of Harvey. You could clarify that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll try to take that. There was no relation to Harvey direct. It was things that we would have otherwise budgeted for in this FY20, but held off on until we had this reimbursement. So we're not, nobody said that they were for Harvey.
Well, I was just looking at this in part of the notification on here, and it says expenses incurred during Harvey, Hurricane Harvey. That's what it captures on the information there before you get to the actual money.
I'm sorry, the, the revenue was from the reimbursements from that? That's the way we've described it since then?
Yeah, but it says FEMA reimbursement for expenses incurred during Hurricane Harvey. And that's the only thing, you know, I don't disagree with any of it, but I'm just saying that a lot of these don't look like that's, you know, coming out of because Harvey was there. Maybe it's something you couldn't come in and put them in a budget.
Again, none of them are for expenses from Harvey. We, the, the reimbursements are for our labor, we expense for police, fire, public works, everybody, there was all hands during that time, so that money was spent. But the expenditures are these items that were deferred from the FY20 budget.
Okay. And the other part is on, as redevelopment on the public works, for example, of large projects on sidewalk, street repair, said they weren't able to be completed in the year period of time. Can you give an example of what those large projects would be? I don't know if Clarence could do that, or, you know?
I might have to ask Clarence to help out on that.
I would have to get back with you that information. I don't have any specific examples. I know we have some large projects here and there that we were able to get done under the wire, like the panels that we, the street panels that we were able to do at Country Place before the end of the year, but other than that, I don't have the information right in front of me.
So one, one of the large ones was through Brazoria County, working with the county on our asphalt paving program. We didn't get the last road on that, on that group of roads completed. I believe that's O'Day. And so that work is still on schedule, or still on the books to be done with, with Brazoria County as soon as we complete our base work.
Okay, so on that, as for what we're paying for is the asphalt, right? And then repaving?
We pay for the asphalt, all materials, as well as the traffic control.
Okay. Yeah, I was just seeing on, on there where it said that expenses incurred during, because of Harvey and, and I, you know, when we go and look at it, the four vehicles that's replaced, I don't know if that's, you know. I read what I read, but I didn't understand what I was reading, I guess, is, I mean, it doesn't seem like it was for Harvey, other than that. And if it's not, well then, you know, that, that's fine and dandy. It's just, you know.
I think that, that was in reference to the revenue, which we, I mean, the city receives in the fund in which it's expensed, but the purpose that we spend it isn't necessarily obligated just to Harvey. So the reference to Harvey was just for the revenue piece. Once it's here, council can allocate that however they'd like.
Okay, all right. Just some clarification.
Another comment or question?
Yes, Mayor, just a couple of small things. With respect to the, the variance in the infunding balance, the 3.8 million, right now is a plan to just kind of hold that in the, in the fund balance until we come back in, in June and come up with some different allocations.
Yes, sir.
Is, do we know if one of the recommendations is going to be, or can one of the recommendations be the benefits of allowing that to stay in the fund balance and what that could mean for our Moody's report? And also, if we were to use it for, for paying down debt service, where, where would that, where would we get the most bang for our buck? And just for, just so I understand how we're going to be treating this in the future, so if we're creating a new fund for a street and road, so let's say when we get the Harvey allocation, 100,000 that go for street and sidewalks, from now on, every time we do a dedication, that's some other motor pool fund that's going to go into that fund, while it won't be enterprise, we're going to try and organize it so we know that when we're taking that money, we're directly taking it out of a fund that's allocated for that?
Yes, so we'll transfer that funding out of general fund into motor pool fund. It'll technically be classified as a capital fund, so it's just kind of one repository that we can centrally put that. It'll carry year to year. You'll see it on the variance report, just like you do the motor pool fund. We'll maintain that visibility, but the principle's very similar.
Fair enough. And just to reiterate the point that I'd, I'd made the other, or last week, possibly when, when this money comes in and we're taking a look at getting the final, final allocations, if I could just kind of get a better understanding of how far the stretch, how far we'll be stretching out the replacement of Crown Victoria, so at least we can make a decision of whether it makes sense to take a bigger bite out of that now with the Harvey reimbursement, or possibly even with the fund over balance, or whether we, whether plan over time is reasonable. And if there's, you know, nothing that prevents us from being able to get all those vehicles replaced in a short amount of time, then I'm okay with us just doing the four now, but it seems like a lot, and I don't want to stretch over the next, like, five or six or seven years. Because as, as I said, it's expensive to maintain those. But, yeah, good work. I know it's a, it's a lot to put together, so I appreciate all the effort you all put in. Thank you.
John, as you, this is basically a working copy we've been reviewing for the council. That has to be transferred back to the original copy that you have, and also it needs to be put into our budget format. And in that process, you'll probably be looking at each one of these numbers, remembering what the council had concerned and, and checking, checking as you go through it, which amounts to another quality assurance run on it.
Yes, sir.
I think by the time we get that in place, that it's going to be pretty sterilized and pretty good shape for that. And of course, the final word would be one of the auditors coming to take a look at it, so as I go through, we'll, we'll try to make it as accurate as possible. And I think, really, this is going to be a review, looking at the council comments, transferring it to the budget format. And I think we'll, we'll see maybe a couple of places where you polish it a little bit if necessary. I think that gives us a sense of confidence in even what our process is. Council, have any other question or comment? Councilmember Carbone?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I guess first of all, thank you for the info on the enterprise fund. It makes a little bit better sense. I guess the, the plan in terms of the depot with tonight's, once tonight's reading passes, I guess, what are the next steps and what's that timing look like? I guess bottom line, are we going to be able to get, we're really going to be able to get it done for a half million, or are we going to be sitting here saying, hey, we're a half million into it, we got to chase it with another four, 500,000?
So what we'll do, the initial cost estimates were created about 18 months ago. What we'll do is we'll enter into an agreement with the same company, Stoa Architects. They'll finalize the, the schematic design, if you will, develop some cost estimates, and then based on that, then we would move forward with, assuming it's still in line, we'd move forward with, you know, the development of those plans and specifications, and then bid that out and bring that back to you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Do you have a question or comment, Council?
Yeah, I, I have one. I support the, the restoration of the, the Train Depot fully. I, I think, kind of along that line of questioning, though, just to remind us how we got here. I, I believe, so the $500,000 is for just the restoration of the depot, is that correct?
That is correct.
And it gets up closer to a million based on developing a separate facility that would be used to host, like, small events?
That is correct. That is correct.
So, and, and I believe the rationale behind that was to defray the, any O and M expense that would be generated by, by a now restored and open depot that people could come in and use as a museum. So I, I would certainly support looking into doing something else with that money or not doing that second component, but just wanted to put that reminder out there that the reason we are doing that is to support the ongoing maintenance and support of the depot, and so it might be something to look into.
Any other comment or question?
Yes, sir, Mayor. In that regard, is CVB prepared, or can we ask them what their thoughts are in the ongoing O and M costs?
We, we can certainly ask that question. The bottom line is, the basic cost that would be available, or that would be required is minor maintenance and upkeep, and then any electrical costs. But we could do, from my perspective, we could do a pro-rata share of that through anybody, let's say if we have some exhibit space in there, and/or if we do rentals or other things where people could utilize the facility, that money could come back in to help offset that expense.
Yeah, I'd rather see that than, than spending more capital funds to build a small event space that we hope that we can rent out to cover some of the costs.
Heard loud and clear, and I'd just like to state that the CVB Advisory Board, the remaining phase, I think they're undecided about whether or not they would want to go forward with that. They're solely recommended approval of the first phase and the first phase only.
I think with respect to what decision we're making right now, the, the allocation is appropriate. The, whether we actually vote to approve the expenditure is certainly a future decision. I think when we make that decision, you know, having an idea of what it takes to just fix, fix what is needed to keep it in good repair versus what is needed to start to create an event center or the first phase of an event center will be important for, for my decision-making. You know, I, my gut is, I, I wanted to say, I think it's going to be a great facility if we have the ability to do it, but we need citizen participation. Donald, I know you're working hard to try and get that. I think the idea is, if the citizens want it, they'll tell us by contributing. If they don't, then, you know, it's, I would struggle to justify putting more money into an event space, that it's not, it's not going to make us money. It's going to, it's, we're going to, we're going to put the money in, we'll never return the, we'll never get a return on the initial investment. Over time, it'll cost us more to maintain than we'll get in revenue. I mean, that's just the nature of public space, but I think for now, we're, I'm okay with the allocation, but just more information before we actually spend.
You know, we've got to remember that the depot was really originally located right where busy bee is today, on the east side of the track, and it was moved over so that the global company could put in a, a line that do repair work for their, some of their facilities in that area. And then, then it, we had to move, we were kicked out of there by the church group that needed that for the, for the parking lot. And it's kind of helped a little bit too, when we had a train that turned over right down from the old city hall, so that, it kind of encouraged us to build this building. And that's moved, it finally found a home here, right by city hall. And I think we need to do what we can to make sure that the void deteriorates anymore. As I get older, I find it, I'm deteriorating in little areas from here, and then thinking As I get older, I find it, I'm deteriorating in little areas from here and then thinking about it. But that's the same thing with the depot. So if we don't fix them up and do it now, we're, it's, we just won't forget it. So I think we, what we can do to help would be greatly appreciated by everybody. And will come answer questions at this point?
Mayor, I've just got one. I'd want to follow up on mine. I, I think it'd be good, you know, I guess probably during the summertime, I went up to Old Town Spring and, and went through their place up there. And, and actually, it's a old depot, what it is. But not only that, but there was a lot of people that, while I was in there, that, that came in there to look at the different artifacts and stuff that's in there. But the thing that got to me is the people that live in that area and have lived in that area a long time had found a place that they could actually take some of the old relic stuff from years in the past and put it in there with their name on it and everything else. And, and I thought that was, you know, a pretty good deal because, you know, and here in Pearland, and I'm sure we got places like, or people has information like that to get put into those places for people to come and look and see and be a part of that. So, you know, if you don't, what do they do? Just pass it down to kids that's not living here anymore or whatever. So I think it's a good thing for us to do it, whether it comes in and, and if it gives us back the million dollars or whatever within a period of time, I don't think that's totally it. But I think that's one of the uses that hot tax is for anyway. And so, you know, that gives the other people that come into Pearland to view different things or their sports facilities, whatever. It gives them an opportunity to go into something like that and look at the history of Pearland.
And I'll add to that. I think the talk about the, the matching and stuff, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the matching component from the historical society was only what, like 10% of the total or something like that? Is that?
Originally, it's supposed to be dollar for dollar. They were going to raise 500K and we were matching it.
Okay.
Originally, the, the thing was set up when I was first with council. They came in and wanted $65,000. And we told them, okay, you know, we'll do it, but we'll, we'll chip in 30,000 if y'all get to 35. And then, you know, it fell on deaf ears and everyone was able to do it. But I think, I think you're right that once we do something on this, that people will see that, and they'll be interested in having that brick out there or whatever, or that bench or something like that. Yeah, so this has been in play for, I know, 15 years for me on there that this has been trying to do that. But I think we've got the opportunity now to actually do it.
Yeah, and to remember Perez's point, I mean, we still get to approve it later. So I think having it in here is kind of a good way to get it on the radar. And we can discuss it as it gets closer to actually pulling the trigger on this stuff. But it's an important piece of our history and, you know, we'll try to work as a group, hopefully, to, to get it done one way or another.
And I've, I've been over to the historical society building and I mean, they don't have any room to put anything over there. It's very cramped over there. They, they need a space. I think it was kind of a, a shock hearing that was not going to be, or we were kind of shifting gears on the dollar for dollar matching thing, or at least was for me. But I, I mean, I understand what we're trying to do here. We're trying to preserve a piece of history for the city. And, you know, it's kind of, I guess, sticker, sticker price shock and then, you know, change in scope. But I hope we can work through this and, you know, work out something where it's, it's going to be in favor of being able to save and preserve this part of the history of Pearland.
Any follow on comments at this point? Hearing none, I believe, Madam Secretary, we have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little? Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, well, that cleared from our agenda. Let's move to item two. Councilmember Little, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action Resolution Number R 2019-306, so moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussions. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. This is bringing to you for acknowledgement and recognizing that we've been successful in securing another grant from the Texas Division of Emergency Management, or T D M. This is for removing some repetitive, I'm sorry, not for removing, for aiding some of the repetitive loss properties. And as described in the memo, this is a grant where there'd be 75% for these individual properties. There'd be a 25% match. Mr. Hardy is prepared to execute this and bring this forward for people who want to raise their houses primarily, like raise up, not raise, tear them down. And that there is going to be, as part of that 25% match, the city will be reimbursed for some of its prior projects and, and work that we've done. And then we'll be prepared to help people as best we can through the process and with C D B G or other things for the match, if that's possible. We have the, the 23 properties that have been identified and we're ready to, to move forward on these. And so we just wanted to bring this to you for formal acknowledgement and moving forward on that. Thanks, sir.
Council, have any question or comment regarding the staff report?
Yes, I mean, I guess, Joel, where do you think we are with the C D B G contribution to help, help those citizens with their 25% match?
That's a good question. And actually, just a minor correction, this is actually for the buyout and acquisition approach to the disaster recovery. We do have a program request out there to the Texas Water Development Board for elevating homes, but we haven't gotten that far yet. So this would actually be a buyout program. With regard to C D B G D R, I'm working with the General Land Office as we speak to finalize on the final R F Is that have come across from our request of $2.7 million for buyouts and $2.6 million for some infrastructure improvement in the target area. And we're very close to getting a contract. In fact, I've spoken with the representatives today, and it looks as though they're trying to put that document before us before the end of the calendar year. I'm not sure if that'll happen, but within the next few weeks, we should have a finalized contract agreement with the state to move forward with that program. And within that buyout portion of our request, we have identified that there are probably five or six properties within the group of applicants in the T D M program that could qualify for the 25% portion of their local share to be covered with C D B G funds.
Do we know that any of the, the individuals that we're buying the land from, except for the vacant lot? Or do any of them feel like the purchase is contingent on whether the C D B G grant granted to them? Could they, are any of them saying that they can't afford the, the 25%?
I would say not at all, because we've been very forthcoming with the information about the program and the expectation that the local share would fall on the homeowner. So Mr. Upton and his staff, they've had several information sessions. We've been in communication with those property owners repetitively over the last 12 months, and that's been made very clear. So this would be a little bit of a boon to those that would expect to have a local share. And we'd come in with the ability to cover it in some cases.
So with respect to like the timing, once we approve the allocation, we get the grant money, we're going to go purchase the, purchase the properties for 75% of their value. And then the other, once they're purchased, the, the landowners will then apply for the grant, which would be, we would facilitate, and then they would be able to get the money subsequent to the, them selling the lot?
So we've actually already taken in some of those applications. So we would just need to vet those and just kind of revisit their application status. So we already kind of have an idea of which ones would qualify. And I think the timing is perfect, because we'll be under contract with the General Land Office very soon, and we'll probably be able to operate these programs contemporaneously.
But they, but there would, would their reimbursement through C D B G be contingent on the lot having been sold? Or do they get it preemptive?
It's going to probably take place simultaneously.
Okay. So there would be, if we, as we allocate those lots, particularly up against Clear Creek, we'll be able to get ahold of these here pretty soon and start planning for the projects that we had talked about in that area essentially as soon as we make this vote now. Because there's, there's nothing subsequent to this vote that's going to be holding us up from being able to take, take these properties into our possession, correct?
Not that I can see. Mr. Upton may have some additional conversation there.
Okay. Thank you.
On the 25% that the property owner is responsible for, they don't really come out of pocket, do they? They don't, they just absorb that?
Correct, Your Honor. They're not writing a check, if you will, at closing. The, you know, financial mechanics of that will work out in such a way that the local share gets covered based on how the, that, that transaction is, is recorded at closing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question or comment?
I just need one clarification on some of this. Does this coincide with the other, what, $5 million that we appropriated out a few months ago? Or buying out these projects, some of these projects or places?
I think there were 500,000, if you will, in pre-award acquisitions that Mr. Upton's department was able to procure. And we were successful in getting the Division of Emergency Management to include those properties in this project as pre-award acquisitions. So great news there. We'll be able to get 75% of those costs brought back to the city in a way that we didn't anticipate.
Just to clarify, there was two sets of 500,000, yes?
One other thing, I've noticed on here, there was two that was in Green Tea, on Green Tea Drive. Once we buy those two properties, they're not contingent upon, well, one of them is close to the Clear Creek. The other is not. And what do we plan to do in there to, you know, any kind of plan that we have for that? We technically, based on the regulations, cannot do anything with those lots. They have to remain in green space in perpetuity, with the exception of use by the neighborhood for ancillary parking or a park. But they cannot be improved, if you will. So the deed conveyance that goes into place, once we acquire those properties, they can't be used for anything else. Yeah, that, that was one of the things that we looked at when I was president of H O A and Green Tea and talked about taking the property down off of Green Tea Drive over there and doing that. And then, but in order to do that, we had to make a swap on something else here that we would pay for that. So it didn't come out as a good thing for us to do it. But they can't be non-pervious areas there. I mean, if we use it for parking lots or something like that, or, or parking, if we had, you know, a chance to go in and, and put, you know, barbecue pits out there or something, you know, and, and place this to sit, there is no place to, to park unless we come in and put a, you know, concrete parking area there. I don't know if that's feasible to do. You're correct, Your Honor. I mean, it would have to be something like grass paved or just, like I said, ancillary. It can't be an improvement. No improvement's on it at all. Okay, that's fine.
Any other question or comment? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion second.
Councilmember Little, how do you vote? Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda to new business item number three. Councilmember Hernandez, would you present this for our consideration?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R 2019-308, so moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussions. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. As part of our water system, we maintain water tanks on 521 Alameda Road on the western perimeter of the city. We have a project that's underway to expand the, the tank itself, add a tank. This is phase two, provides the piping and electronics and so forth for that as well to finish that out. And they'll strengthen our resiliency for the water supply. This is off of the Houston take point there. But this will also work with the rest of the system to provide storage and give us that redundancy. And so moving forward on this, it's been in the C I P and ask for your consideration here again tonight.
Okay, does council have any question or comment on this item? We don't put that in, we can't get the well working, and we can't get used over in water storage tank.
Where you going, Carbone?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, Mayor. Couple of questions, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
When I look at the site plan, I don't see any sidewalks. And if this was a business doing this type of improvement, wouldn't be, wouldn't we require sidewalks? And maybe some extra trees and, and also maybe a fire lane?
Councilman Carbone, with regards to the sidewalks, this is State Tex- dot highway, 521's Farm to Market Road. They're actually planning on widening that, and sidewalks are included with that project. And this work is actually just internal into the site itself, dealing with adding new pumps and planning for the future when we do bring in surface water treatment plant, from water from the surface water treatment plant to distribute out, and making those upgrades necessary to do that and to the electrical room.
Okay, so if this was a private business, it wouldn't trigger any of the upgrades? I mean, are we playing by our own rules that we make businesses play by?
Yes, sir. As far as I'm, I'm aware with working with our planning department, we're abiding by those rules and every project moving forward has been required.
Okay. And then a little bit more serious question on the, I mean, this location is close to Blue Ridge landfill. I guess, are we open to allowing any sort of monitoring being done at that facility? Because I would be in favor of that if T C Q or anybody else wanted to put up a monitoring station there.
Air monitor or groundwater monitor?
I was thinking air. Yeah.
Councilman Carbone, we're open to that. We have the room there and we're open, open to that.
Thank you.
Any other question at this point? Comment?
That was one of the reasons, Councilmember Carbone, that we originally looked at on the Blue Ridge landfill is a seepage of water coming out. That was one of the things that was written in there. You know more than anybody. On the contract, Mayor, and when I looked, I had enough time to go through all the bid items on it. And so it really seemed, you know, Boyer, I think, I think I would take them off the list based upon the information they put in there on the, on the bid items and the cost of them. But actually, in the bid items, one through four, they were, they were pretty, pretty high based on Boyer and what the engineer's estimate was on there. And so, but then you go down further in the bid on it. The extra items that's on there that's been bid on, is that extra bid items that you think is going to be used or, or not? Or is that a contingency that's put in there as extra bid items?
Councilman Owens, it's also, it's to get us unit pricing for when, if there is that need, because those items are not included, if you take a look within the regards to the base item, they're rolled in together. And if we're going to need more bank sand than what was originally needed, do we have a unit price to be able to compensate for that?
Yeah, I, I understand that as we go through the contract on there. But it's, you know, the unit prices, and, and I'm sure that this is extra bid items that's on there, that they will not be able to use those bid items unless they get approval at the city, since they're listed as extra bid items.
That's correct.
Not for the bid. But, you know, the, it just seems like that, you know, other people I've seen use that, they put in extra items and it's actually is to cover up the contingency on there. But even going through there and then the engineering that was designed, it was done by Costello, and some of them, they were way off in what the bids were based upon the low bid here. And so it was, it's just a, you know, of course, Boyer's not going to get the bid, but I think I would take them off, looking at the things that they had bid and the way that they bid those. And there in the prices, how much they escalated all the way through. But the extra items, that's the only thing I had, you know, one of the questions I had is those extra items are bid items that can't be used unless they get approval out of the city to use it, staff to use those, extra bid items. So I just think, you know, out of some of this, and the difference in the prices that the low bid gave us versus what Costello was putting there as a bid prices on there, there's a, there was a big separation between those that, that the actual low bidder was a lot lower than what Costello had put in there as, as the engineer on the prices. And that kind of tells me that at some point in time, there's going to be some different things coming in for additional money based upon those differences of how much they are. But I would be very cautious on it, you know, looking at that as we go through that, if anything that we have. But I would be very cautious on it, you know, looking at that as we go through that, if anything that we have is any additional request for money in, in these areas because of the differences between the engineer's estimates and the contractor that's bidding.
Any other question or comment, Gal?
Just a couple of tangential questions. There were only two bidders on this. Do we, do we feel like it was just because of the specialty nature of the work? Or are we sending, seeing a friend to where we're not getting as many contractors bidding on, on projects that we're releasing?
Councilman Perez, we've been advertising very diligently and marketing all of our projects. It's the nature of the market right now, but these are two qualified firms, both with a history, one with us, with the city, and the other one with WW Peyton has a history with Costello. All reputable firms, but that's, we just have two bidders and that's where we are right now. The market is the market.
Is that the feedback we're getting is there's just too much work out there and they don't want to stress themselves then?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other question or comment? Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second here.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with Councilmember Carbone absent from the chambers.
Moving to business item number four. Councilmember Moore, would you present this?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R2019-307, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second word in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a follow-up to a council request for providing some guidance in terms of a code of conduct for our volunteer board and commission members. Similar to the council, you several years ago adopted for yourselves a, a rules of order and some expectations. This would spell them out for the board and commission members and how they conduct themselves and taking care of city business and so forth. So, as I said, it's, was a council request. We circulated this and really for your consideration. And if you'd like to adapt that or adopt that tonight, it's your prerogative. So, all's in the council's court for this.
Council have any question or comment on this item? I don't hear anything, but I was...
I just kept one, you know, are we going to send these out to people that have signed up, that come in and be interviewed? Something that they understand prior to coming in for an interview?
Our expectation would be that we'd send it out to all your existing board and commission members. It's, you know, it shouldn't be any big surprises. I mean, this is pretty straightforward. But then also, yes, as people are applying for, we'll certainly make that available. So, they know that when they're coming in as well.
Fine, thank you.
Well, I'll speak up. I, I think this is an important step for us to help communicate to those that are on the board and also have an understanding of what the expectations are to, if you're going to be a, a board member or commission member. I think sometimes as council evolves, some of the understandings or assumptions of what the board members are expected to do may evolve with that. So, I think this gives us a good base understanding. So, there's solid foundation for which we can build the relationship with on, I think, with respect to timeliness and absenteeism. You know, I think being able to express to our board members, we, we love your volunteerism, but if you're going to hold the position, we'd, we'd like you to, to attend on a regular basis. I think this helps to communicate that, you know, that's an expectation. I think, you know, as, as a board member, you're also representative of the city as a whole and having an expectation that, you know, be careful about your communication. Make sure that we're all working on the same team, the same team. Please feel free to voice your, voice your opinion as you feel necessary, but don't, don't lose sight of the fact that when they, when, when you're representing that your opinion, people come sometimes see you as, as contiguous with the city as they do us. So, just kind of be mindful of differentiating one's opinion versus what's an official statement for the city of Pearland. But I, I think these are, these are fair. I think, I appreciate staff putting these, putting these together. I, I can't imagine there's going to be anybody who has volunteered that's going to have issues with these. So, I think this is an important step in our communication. Because of me?
Yeah, because you, they wrote.
Sure they did. They all read me exactly. Thanks staff for putting together.
Very good, and I appreciate staff putting this together. What would be, what are the consequences of a board member violating these policies?
Since the members of boards and commissions serve at the pleasure of council, that would be up to the discretion of the council to make a decision on it. I would imagine on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you. Any other question or comment?
Just want to say thanks to staff and Darren for helping us get this together and giving us the opportunity to put our feedback in. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a motion second here.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with Councilmember Carbone absent from the chambers.
Moving to item number 10 on our agenda. Mayor, council issues for council discussion or consideration. There were none presented. Item 11, executive sessions under government code, section 551.087, consultation with city attorney regarding economic development negotiations in section 551.074, personnel matters regarding the remit ratification of the city's manager's appointment of a city secretary. Obviously, in executive session, we discuss this with the individuals that are a part of the audience in the executive session, but we cannot make a decision there. It must be, this item must be brought back off of these for consideration and open record. So, at this time, we will recess into executive session at 6:43.
The Councilor has returned from executive session at 7:14. Moving in our agenda to...
Okay, yes.
Item number five, Councilor Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. I will allow the city attorney to present this motion.
Okay. Yes, Mayor. I'd recommend a motion based on discussion in exec session to proceed, authorize the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to negotiate and enter into a revised loan agreement with project number 1905. Also authorize the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to negotiate and enter into a loan and infrastructure agreement with project number 1906. And also authorize the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to negotiate and enter into a loan agreement with project number 1907.
So moved.
Moving in our agenda to...
Okay, yes.
Item number five, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. I will allow the city attorney to present this motion.
Okay. Yes, Mayor, I'd recommend a motion based on discussion in exec session to proceed, authorize the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to negotiate and enter into a revised loan agreement with project number 1905. Also authorize the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to negotiate and enter into a loan and infrastructure agreement with project number 1906. And also authorize the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to negotiate and enter into a loan agreement with project number 1907.
So I move second.
Have a motion circuit on the floor and if there's a question or comment? Some staff on this item? There is none. As my secretary, I believe we have a motion circuit on the floor here.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with councilmember Carbone absent from the chambers.
Moving in our agenda to item number six. Councilmember Owens, would you present this for our consideration?
Yes, sir. Consideration possible action or order, the ratification of the city manager's woman. If a city secretary also move.
Second.
Have a motion circuit. We're in discussion. Staff report in on this? Okay. As my secretary, we got a motion circuit on the floor.
Councilmember Owens, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with councilmember Carbone absent from the chambers.
Moving in our agenda to item number eight, which is other business. There is none. Item 14, that was 13, and 14 is adjourned, which I so did.